All right. Good evening and welcome to the Chaska City Council meeting for Monday, June 29th, 2020. We are at the Chaska Event Center tonight to help with our social distancing. So we'll go ahead and we'll call the meeting to order at 7:06. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. With that, Nate, will you take role, please?
This is Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Grau.
Here.
And Mayor Windshuttle.
Here. Moves us to item four, adopting the agenda. Are there corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, entertain a motion to approve agenda.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield, or Hubbard, excuse me, to adopt the agenda. Discussion.
Hearing none.
Um, Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Grau.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Mayor Windshuttle. Yes. All right, passes 5:00. Moves us on to visitor presentation. We have a number of them tonight. So tonight, we start with a presentation by Nancy Haheim, representing the group, America Promise.
Good evening. Can you guys all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, good evening, Chaska City Council. The ward representatives may remember me from a meeting at Caribou Coffee last fall. Doesn't that seem like a lifetime ago? Despite the onslaught of COVID-19 and the murder of George Floyd, there are some fundamental American issues that have not gone away. I represent an organization called American Promise. Our goal is to get big money out of politics by passing a 28th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution to overturn Citizens United. American Promise is a national, cross-partisan organization, meaning it includes Democrats, Republicans, independents, libertarians, and others. It was formed by a constitutional attorney by the name of Jeff Clements in 2016. The Supreme Court ruling called Citizens United said that corporations have the same rights as people, including the right to free speech, and further ruled that money is a form of free speech. In our current legal situation, we have unchecked political spending by corporations, unions, special interest groups, and wealthy individuals. This effectively silences the voices of regular citizens and makes a truly representative government of, by, and for the people unattainable. Currently, lawmakers respond more to their big donors than to their constituents. Per Dean Phillips, lawmakers spend more time fundraising than governing. Less affluent candidates may not be able to afford to run. Governments in all areas, federal, state, and low, have no ability to enact and enforce controls on campaign finance spending. In 2018, outside groups and candidates spent more than $57 million to influence Minnesota state-level elections. And 62% of Amy Klobuchar's 2018 campaign money came from out-of-state. According to a May 2018 survey by the University of Maryland School of Public Policy, 75% of all Americans support an amendment to get big money out of politics. Breaking that down, that's 85% of Democrats, 66% of Republicans, including recently Mayor Tom Funk of Victoria, and 70% of independents. This is not a partisan issue. The only way to effectively and permanently overturn the Citizens United decision is to pass a constitutional amendment. This requires two-thirds of the House to pass, two-thirds of the Senate, and then three-quarters, or 38 states, to pass. In advance of a legislative vote on an amendment, there are already 20 states that have passed resolutions in support of a 28th Amendment. And that's where you come in. This is truly a grassroots movement. We want the city of Chaska to pass a resolution in support of a 28th Amendment to say that corporations are not persons, that only natural persons are endowed with constitutional rights, and that federal, state, and local governments have the power to regulate contributions and expenditures for elections and campaigns. In passing this resolution, you will be signaling to our state representatives that you want Minnesota to pass such a resolution, too. So far in Minnesota, the cities of Minneapolis, St. Paul, Duluth, New Brighton, Lauderdale, and North Oaks, as well as the county of Sherburne, have passed resolutions in favor of a 28th Amendment. Over 800 resolutions have been passed nationally, including 160 in Wisconsin alone. I invite you to make Chaska the next city. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Oops, this is weird. Can we turn that volume down a little? Oh, now it's okay. Um, so Nancy, help me in understanding. This still has to be voted on by the Congress and legislature or not?
Well, the Minnesota legislature doesn't really have any authority to pass a constitutional amendment. All they would do is vote in favor of a resolution so that Minnesota gets added to the 20 states that have already passed resolutions. The only real way to enact a constitutional amendment is with the federal senate and the federal house, and then 38 states. So we're just, we're sort of laying the groundwork for Minnesota to ratify an amendment, you know, once it gets to that point.
Is the hope of the group to be able to have enough states provide that support so that if it did get passed in Congress, they'd know they'd have enough to ratify the amendment?
Absolutely. Yep.
So by coming to us, the hope is that building the grassroots support of various communities and cities throughout Minnesota and also the United States, you basically demonstrate that there's a general consensus of support amongst the community and amongst the population that this is something that's important to legislators in the Capitol?
Absolutely. Yep, yep. We just, we, so if it were, if there were going to be a vote today, we would be telling Senator Johnson and Representative Bow that the city of Chaska is behind this.
And maybe, maybe I missed it. How much of our cities and counties of Minnesota do you need that we get moved forward?
I don't know that there's a specific numerical requirement. It's, it's sort of a, like a ground swelling of support. And the fact that Minneapolis, St. Paul, and Duluth have already passed it, I think, signals a lot. But, you know, we want every, we want every small and large city in Minnesota to pass a resolution. So there's no doubt that this is wanted by the people.
Okay, and like I told you when we were on the phone, that in a visitor presentation, we don't vote on anything. We would just have dialogue on it and then go from there at some point. But this is the resolution that you'd want used? Is that correct?
Yeah, I sent you guys the resolution last week via email, so yes, preferably that's it. And do you have any idea when you would vote on whether you're going to adopt it?
I think the question from a staff perspective would be, is this some, you know, there's a number of different options that could be taken. You know, one could be that we bring it back for further discussion at a work session to be able to, you know, to have discussion about what it actually would entail. Could be that you guys should say, no, this is something that we support. We, you know, ask you as staff to bring back a resolution for us to consider. You know, I think there's a myriad of different directions that we could take this. I think at the very least, we'd want to, you know, if it is something that you're interested in doing without exploring further, that you'd want to direct us as staff to bring back that as an actual item to consider. So I think it's really dependent on if you guys want to have more discussion on it or not.
I mean, after I met with Nancy last fall, I really struggled to find many negatives to it personally. And I watched the council meeting. I can only find the council meeting where I think St. Paul passed it. And, you know, they had a good discussion, but I really did struggle to find anything negative, so I guess personally. I, you know, and Nancy and your team, thank you so much. You provided amazing support for it to make it really easy to go through and understand it and interact with it. And yeah, like I said, I personally couldn't find a whole lot of negative to it, but that's, that's me.
I echo the same sentiments of Councilmember Hatfield. It seemed kind of like a no-brainer to me. The idea that, you know, we want our elected officials to govern rather than campaign, and it's a nonpartisan issue, just seems, like I said, no-brainer. So, you know, whether we need a working session, I don't know if that's necessarily necessary. I don't know how many other council members have met individually with you, Nancy, but I know I did. And it, yeah, the resolutions seemed very easy to comprehend and, you know, I'm supportive of it, but.
And I also had opportunity to meet with Nancy and some others as well. And, you know, I think that fundamentally and principle, you know, it's about making sure that the people are represented as the people, not as like large consolidations of power that represent other interests. And, you know, the, I think the key thing here is that, you know, this is a, this is making a statement that we want every vote to really count, to really matter, not some big company who throws around money for some special interest. So, you know, to me, it's something that's like, is a nonpartisan, to me, is a nonpartisan issue. This is about making sure the people's votes really count. So, you know, from that perspective. And that's what else can I say? You know, it's, so I would say with that, with the canine support, I'll go with that.
Yeah, I would go, I mean, to me, I find myself continuing to think about diversity, inclusion, and with everything going on. And that goes past, you know, this goes right into that. It's a barrier. Money is definitely a barrier, and a cost of entry to politics and to get your voice heard, and that's, that's a problem. And that impacts the diversity of the ideas, the diversity of the people, and that's, that's not a partisan issue, right? I think that is, that's an American issue. We need to, people should be able to participate how they want to participate and feel like they're heard. So, yeah, I echo kind of what the others said. You know, I, it's not something I'll be 100%. It's always something I've been aware of and concerned with, the cost of entry to have a voice or opinion or run for office, to be heard to some degree. Little did I know there was an organization kind of behind that, so it was great to hear about that and everything like that. So, yeah, I echo the others that says, you know, this would be something I think, I don't know if we need a work session. I think it's been laid out pretty good and could be in a presentation style laid out pretty good. But I'd like to see it come to a formal conversation and to potentially vote. Yep.
But we can't vote on it. But I, like, I, like I said, the big money in, in politics today now has always been a, something when you have presidential candidates, they can't move on unless they've raised X amount of money. But I, how does this get governed when something happens? Because to run for, I mean, I couldn't even envision running for president, how much money has to be raised. Now, it says that we're looking for disclosure of our money. Isn't that already a law, that all that's out there?
Sorry. All I can, I have a limited knowledge on this. I know that Minnesota is a little bit unique because it has a campaign finance board, but across the country, I think that is definitely not the case. And in general, this kind of disclosure is not required. And also, Vicki Barnes is the head of the American Promise Coalition for kind of the whole Midwest area. And she's actually participating on the Zoom. She's got herself muted, but I guess I would invite Vicki to chime in here if she has anything else to add.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I'm one of those rare things where I have two Zoom calls at the same time, so I'm listening mostly to this. Yes, the, the disclosure laws are, they're always proposed, there I am, but there's no political will to pass them, including in the state of Minnesota. There have been great disclosure bills proposed, but there's no political will to pass them. Strange groups come out in opposition. And so, so we don't need a constitutional amendment to pass disclosure bills. That was one thing that the Supreme Court expected Congress to pass, but of course, Congress is too politically divided to do anything. So what this does is the city passing a resolution, it has multiple levels of help. It, it, not only does it state your support for the state legislators to, to pass a resolution in favor, but also to the congressional delegate from the state of Minnesota to know that another city is calling on this. It also helps to educate your constituents, your residents there within the city through publicity posted afterwards. We are happy to do any kind of presentation or town hall. You'd like to help inform your citizens about this because ultimately, we need 38 states to ratify, and as we know what's going on with the ERA amendment, you know, that's not as a slam dunk as you think it is. So what, what passing a resolution in the state of Minnesota does is demonstrate that we are ready to ratify and push more pressure on Congress to pass, to propose an amendment that we will feel is right to ratify. So, so it's got multiple opportunities within, within it. So your, your part in that, that would be to help, you know, push the state and the, your congressional delegation to pass.
So, so maybe you know this. How much participation are letters of these, these resolutions are needed for the state to say we're moving forward with that?
Well, it depends on, you know, when you pass a resolution, your representatives there, your Minnesota House member and senator will know that, that the population of Chaska is in favor of this. And so that puts pressure on them to support the resolution. I, I won't sugarcoat it for you. It's, although the public, as Nancy said, the majority of Americans support this, it's when you get to state and federal legislators, it's divided on party line. Because originally, at the passage of Citizens United, it, the Republican Party thought they'd have the upper hand because they could raise a lot of money through the corporate spending. But actually, as Nancy mentioned, Senator Klobuchar had a lot of out-of-state support. It's actually turned in 2018 for the first time, the Democratic Party outspent the Republican Party. And that's not counting the dark money. Dark money, we just really can't trace. But, but that's, you know, it's, it's divided on party line. However, I have to tell you, when I speak to a Republican legislator individually, they support this. So, I mean, I've had comments like, I think you don't go far enough. So they do support this as individual. So that's where the constituents come in. They need to hear from their, the representatives, the senators need to hear from their constituents. So this is a whole civic education thing. I mean, who remembers how an amendment is passed? I mean, I remember seven years ago, and I found out, I'm like, oh, that's a thing? Yeah, that's a thing. That's a thing we do. That's where the people have the final say. It's between us and our elected officials only. The president has no say, and the Supreme Court has no say. Only the directed, directly elected officials, the members of Congress, and the people are the ones that push the amendment process.
And like I say, I mean, I fully understand what you're trying to do, but I'm trying to figure out how it's governed. Because if you're running for president, you still need to raise a ton of money to be able to move about the whole United States to campaign and to do all these things. Are, are we?
There's been different things that have been proposed over time for how you'd actually pay for that. So some suggestions have been that that become completely publicly financed, that each presidential candidate would get a certain allocation of dollars given to them, and that's what would be used, and that's the only thing that they could use.
I did not know that.
Note that we're not advocating for any specific amendment. There are amendment proposals currently in Congress, and there's one that has support in the House and the Senate, and one's only in the House. So there are amendment proposals. Our, our call is to just to be able to regulate campaign spending. We're not saying how it should be regulated. That's going to be a whole nother battle. But once, we don't have the ability to do it right now. So how it's going to be done is going to be, it could take even more involvement from the citizens in Congress. But, but depending on the wording of the amendment, for example, right now, the amendment proposal that has most, the most support in Congress, I think 220 members in the House, you need 290. 47 members in the Senate, you need 67. That amendment has a word in there that is to ensure political equality. And when you take the way the amendment is written, it can give Congress the direction as to what kind of amendment they need to pass. So in the words "political equality" on there, no one group or person could be given advantage over another group or person because it's, the amendment was passed to ensure political equality. So the way the amendment is worded is how Congress will need to pass to propose the amendment. And they propose it to the states, and the states decide whether or not they want to ratify it.
Okay. Right. Any other questions? John, I don't see them.
I hear consensus in the group that staff should put together a draft resolution, staff report, and we'll bring it back to a future meeting. Okay. We'll do. It probably will not be the sixth, because we got sort of a short week this week, but we'll shoot for that meeting on 21st, 20th?
Uh, 20th.
14 plus.
Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. All righty. Then under visitor presentation, I know verbally, I, that Matt Uderman is here tonight. That he was stepping forward, and then we have one other one that verbally tonight.
Good evening. Is this on? My name is Matt Uderman, and I'm here to formally announce I'm running for Carver County Commissioner in District 3. The district basically runs west of Highway 41 from downtown Chaska to Highway 5 for Chaska and Victoria residents. You'll see a lot of the You Matter messaging, a positive message that puts you, the collective voter and stakeholder, first. We have three campaign pillars. People matter. We believe people come before politics. Part of that is creating wide and deep relationships in the community. I value the relationships I have with each city council member and make a point to come to a council meeting quarterly in person and watch nearly all taped meetings. I think there is a sizable opportunity to forge better relationships with county and city for the benefit of taxpayers by way of reducing non-value layers and possible duplication of efforts while deploying resources to other areas. COVID-19 and the true and societal costs will be one area these collaborative relationships will benefit taxpayers. Two, community matters. We believe you should be able to live here a lifetime if you so choose. I've had the chance to serve as a chair of the Carver County Library Board, commissioner on the Park and Recreation Board, as well as a volunteer at areas like Auburn Manor, Christmas in May, Beef and Sausage Dinners, and more. I've had the chance to meet with over 1,500 residents and stakeholders, including ride-alongs with mayors of Chaska, Victoria, to see firsthand the hot topics of our community's mind, including senior facilities, 55-plus developments, policing, affordable housing, including Ridge U Terrace, Brandon Dale, and Habitat for Humanity developments, proposed park areas, future schools, and business developments that will pave the way for $60,000-plus jobs and opportunities for all. Three, finances matter. I feel county needs to do a smarter job of spending. With a record number of rooftops at the highest values and a strong economy pre-COVID, we saw a board-approved 4.8% tax increase on top of being the highest tax county in the state. Record car tab fees and a local goods tax. Empowering staff and sending staff to find and remove waste and non-value layers, as well as local partnerships, can keep our taxes lower while not sacrificing valued services. For those that didn't know, Mayor Mark is my father-in-law, and as much as he tried to talk me out of it, I feel a duty to lead in the community by running for commissioner. The city council has benefited from new infusion of talent and ideas, as evidenced by four new council members in the last two years. The county board has been unchanged since 2006 and could benefit from the same. New ideas, new perspectives, and putting you first. I welcome your personal support for our campaign and any questions or comments. I'm Matt Uderman, and I'll continue working hard to earn your vote.
Questions for Matt?
I would just say thanks, Matt. I know, I had to say this to any candidates or anything. I think, you know, I've been told this, and I do appreciate, it's like stepping up to serve and to put yourself out there, and you're going to get some nice things said to you, and you're going to, you've already got some probably mean things said to you. And I think that's just, I appreciate that. It's not the easy thing to do. You know, a lot of people will think, you know, I want to do something different, but they won't step to the plate to try to do that. So I, again, just have the respect for anyone who puts their name into a position to run for office, serve the city, serve a county. So just appreciate you putting your hat in the ring and coming forth tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
The same. I did try to talk him out of it. There's no doubt about it. And I agree with John that it's good to see younger folks stepping forward and looking at these positions, and more importantly, not coming for an issue. But just the idea of that it's important to get involved when you're at a younger age. So I think that's important, that a lot of times, people run in local issues because they had an issue. And after that, they're really not sure why they're there. So I think that this is important. You, you talk about your values, and that just says a lot about why you're running, and it is greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Amanda.
Hi, Council. My name is Amanda Flowers-Petersen. Tonight, I'm here representing ROAR, Residents Organizing Against Racism, but I've been before you in other hats as well. I wanted to speak specifically to my increasing concern about how much I'm not able to spend time with my family personally because I'm disappointed with the way that the city and you as the council are not considering the voices of individuals who are being affected by racism in this community. There is not enough initiatives coming from here. I sat through the work session. We're not talking about the national crisis of racism associated with police brutality. We are pretending that this is not happening here. And I would like to propose that you guys talk about an initiative about how we can actually get the voices of all our citizens who are here. ROAR started out of a ton of people who tried to have private sessions with you. I've had private sessions with many of you. We've tried everything in our power, and we started because nothing was getting done. We were being told you would do one thing. There's never any follow-up. There is never any accountability. There's never any follow-through as to what you say you're going to do. And we really would like a citizen-led group where we can actually have individuals have you on recording, where you say you're going to do something, and as a community, we can come collectively together and do stuff. Now, there has been proposals made personally by me where I have said that I am vested. I'm shaking right now. I have two black sons. I, every day, have to work in this community and deal with bias and racism happening by my participants who have black and brown bodies. I have nowhere to make a complaint. When I go with them, I am often being violated, treated as my black body would suggest, but also my participants. I can't force them, and nor do I want to force them to even want to be here. They're being treated so adversely. We try to communicate to you while also keeping the peace, also trying to bring awareness, also trying to educate. So one of the biggest points that I want to bring up to you is Human Rights Commission, for instance. We are begging, and I have personally asked everyone on this leadership team, can we please have an ombudsman or some kind of process that is not biased, that can take complaints, that can hear us, that would be culturally sensitive, that when someone is coming to you bawling, maybe they are hysterical, maybe they are freaking out, but you do not want to meet with someone who has a gun in a holster, who's getting defensive when. who's getting defensive when you tell them that you were treated adversely. You just want to be able to tell your story and hear that you're welcome and you're valued in this community. And unfortunately, we can't even go to the Human Rights Commission to do that because we are told that that's only an educational format. And I'm told that you are the powers that be to be able to make a decision on how to change that. That you would be able to make it more like an ombudsman where we could come to you and come to a Human Rights Commission meeting and say, hey, this is our experience and you would walk alongside of us. I do not know how to make it happen. Like I said, I have talked to many privately and I still have not had anybody say, this is the process that you need to take. This is how you get these changes happening. And our mental health is going down the drain rapidly. And so I again ask you, I came up here, again, took time away from my family. I work 14-hour days. I'm still working while I'm sitting here and I am begging you to please do what you were elected to do. Take care of all of your citizens and come up with creative solutions to at least hear our experiences. I'll take questions if you have any before I go.
Questions for Amanda?
I, and I don't expect you to know this, but I, um, I received an email that had your name on it today. And so that was, you know, those words heartbreaking, what was in the email? And so I, I'd already been looking at what cities are doing this well. Um, and I was finding some. So I guess, um, you know, I'm one person. And I've had a chance to talk to a couple of people in my ward specifically about what, where did they see this done well? Have they seen this done well? But, um, certainly, like I said, I don't expect that to be you, but, um, as a council.
Suggestions, like I met with Matt and Nate and I suggested that they meet with Bloomington. Bloomington did a whole overhaul of their Human Rights Commission and made them more like an ombudsman. These, there are examples. I was told that they were going to check in with them and that I would be followed up. That was almost a year ago. I have heard.
Follow up with them.
You did not follow up with me. I don't know of who you followed up with, but you didn't follow up with me. Okay. So, uh, again, I'm the citizen making the complaint and I am not hearing any follow-through. And also I don't feel, see that there's any, I, I'm not hearing any updates from you guys. I'm not hearing anybody come up here and speak and say that there's changes being made. So even if you followed up, where is it? We still need this. So I, I am full of research. I am a researcher. I am ready. Our families. Our families need this. And we cannot keep coming to community sessions being told, our police officers are great. And this is happening when you guys are not making a space for our narratives to exist. You are telling us our narratives have no room here. And we are just asking for a safe space to be fully heard without being violated while bringing the information to you. That is it. That is literally, I mean, I'm, I'm going to be honest. We'll ask for more, but right now that is the first step and that's all we've asked for and we have not been able to get farther. Any other questions?
Oh, go ahead.
Somebody.
Okay. I, I just want to comment that I feel horrible that you felt that that community session was not a safe space.
Not at all, Taylor. You were in my group.
I know. And, and perspective.
The racist things were said. How many times, I had to go to a therapy session after the situation. Again, these, these spaces are not safe for people of color who my brother was brutalized and had cocaine planted on him by police officers. To engage in these kinds of things, and I have a Hennepin County sheriff who is my uncle. So I see both sides and have no interest in saying I'm demeaning human life. I value human life. All I am asking for is that we continue to stop pretending that these spaces are created for people who look like me. They're not. When you say we legally have to do it for everyone, fine. Then create spaces that are more inclined or more designed with thinking about my body and mine. That's all.
And that's a very fair statement. I'm not discrediting that at all. And in regards to kind of touching on the Human Rights Commission, I sat on that commission many years ago. That commission, from my understanding, when I sat on that commission, was a platform for you to come and voice your grievances. And I, I don't know where the message got lost. But I want to make a safe space for you. I want you to know that.
Thank you.
I understand. I don't fully understand. I can't fully understand. I can halfway understand.
Fair.
I can halfway understand where you're coming from. I want to be that bridge for you.
We'd like to see it. And all, what we would like to see is plans put in place that are actually thinking about black and brown bodies in this community that is thinking and centered around us trying to make a safe space so that our stories can be heard accurately, accounted for, and advocated for. So that those of you who claim you care about ours and our bodies, that you can walk alongside of us and ensure that we feel welcome just as much as every other citizen in this community. John, you had something you were going to say?
Yeah. Thank you. I don't know. Again, I'm, I'm going to be worried about how I'm going to say this and how I was going to come off. But, but sitting here and listening to you passionately speak, I, I have to say something because I do believe, you know, sitting, remain silent is, is not the answer. You know, I, I appreciate your passion. I appreciate, um, your, your voice that you've provided and understand the, the hurt that's behind that voice. Uh, I'm with Taylor. You know, I think we, we need to make a safe space. Chaska's not perfect and, and we got to do better. You know, I, I think, um, you know, the council, I'll be honest, I can speak, the council's had, we had conversations. There's, I've, we've talked about it. We've, Matt's talked about it. The Human Rights Commission wasn't in need for an overhaul. I'd like to see that continue. And then, you know, I think we were, you know, looking at that closely and then COVID hit. And not, and not making that an excuse because that's been a, you know, in the struggles that the, the black and brown communities had is the pandemic is a sliver of time, right? So I'm not making an excuse of that. And now we're, we're working through that. I, I do think we should continue to need to renew that. And I'd ask the city to continue to look at kind of what that we were, that conversation. Cause, um, I think we all acknowledge, right? That the, the existence of that group is changed and it's, it, it's, was, was it serving the function that it needed to serve? And, um, so again, I, I, again, I probably could have said that better and be more prepared. But I wanted to, to just say, I hear you. I hear everyone. I, I, I think it is, we can do better as a community and, but I am also, um, proud of what we've done in Chaska. I don't want to go without saying that. I, I do think, again, more can be done. We're not perfect, but we've, we've, we're taking the some steps where other communities have. I'll just put it out that way. You know, and, and, uh, that doesn't get us a gold medal. It does, I don't want a gold medal for that. But I do want to make sure that we continue to listen, to hear you. So you can have work-life balance and most importantly, you and your family and others can feel safe and safe in Chaska.
So I, you know, I believe that everything you're saying is true. Right? The most important thing here is that as we, if we always look at ourselves as the best small town in Minnesota or try to aspire to that, we can't really achieve that if a single citizen here doesn't feel that they have the right to comfortably speak and share their story.
Yes, yeah. I agree.
And so I think that everyone here in this room believes that we're aspiring to that. And that means there's room for improvement. There's room for growth and we need to create those opportunities for people to be able to do that. How we'll do that, don't know, but we'll have to figure it out. This part of the journey we'll go through together to figure out how to get there. I don't have any answers right now, but that's something we'll have to talk through to figure out. But we do owe it to our community, every single member of our community, of every color, every race, religion, background, that they should have the ability to, to exert their First Amendment rights to freedom of speech, to share their stories, to be able to come to, uh, come to whether it's council or some other group to be able to share whatever that story happens to be. And it's important to do that. The first step of any community building is listening, to understand, to empathize, and figure out how do we meet someplace and figure out a solution together.
Thank you.
So that's, and that's what we'll, we'll have to work through. I can't promise anything will happen overnight, but we do need to do better.
I think I am speaking to my own body personally, mature enough and have the intellect enough to understand that things don't happen when you snap your fingers. I have not seen action from you. And I think if we can all, and I invite you, but you can't, I don't, I can't force you, can just own that you haven't done enough and, and you can continue to sit in that. I think we will get a lot farther than we have the last year if we just focus on the one last year where I was really interested because I was personally violated in my workplace and racially assaulted and almost physically very badly assaulted and didn't get any support from the police. So this, that was my motivational factor as to why I started hitting home and trying to seek out support. I called anybody and everyone that would listen to me and nothing happened with it. There was no grotesqueness of the fact that I experienced that. It was business as usual. If you all can just own your actions, sit in that for the sake of our community and say, we need to have more urgency around this. This is happening. And even though it's not happening to me, it is happening to a lot of people. And I don't know why you are not getting these stories, but I can assure you that in one year, being at Launch Ministry, when I flipped it from 10% people of color that we were serving to 90% people of color in one year, that I am getting it every day. So we welcome you to come into our organization and see how we are making safe spaces. But it had to do with actions.
Well, I mean, I'll say that we have been, have been listening. We're doing things that nothing, nothing is quick and fast. I mean, we've done events. We've sent all of our staff through training through the YMCA. We've done Marnita's table. We're now starting to do these police conversations.
We asked for as community citizens here. We have been asking for this same thing, Mayor, and we have not gotten a response to this. So I believe all of that work is valuable and all of that work is also mandated and expected of you. But I'm asked, telling you that as a citizen here, we have made specific requests and we are not getting them heard. And to be, tell us that when someone says, I'd like a rotisserie chicken and for you to bring back a steak and said, I did something. Can we not have this discussion where we're disagreeing on the fact that I am trying to come eloquently articulate to you with respect and say, can we just be honest? It hasn't happened. I am willing to partner with you. I am not willing to lie and pretend you are doing something that you're not. I am, I would love to see that. I would love to sing from the rooftops. Chaska is amazing because they're doing what they say they're going to do. I can't yet. I'm okay with that. I'm not leaving. I love this community. I just want us to do something different.
And we've reached out and asked us to sit down and have a meeting with you. So when we, we'll, when we have that opportunity, we can sit down and have these discussions.
In private, and then who's going to hold us accountable?
I will hold us accountable. I will be a part of that meeting. I have made this a personal endeavor. This is a focal point of what I want. If you talk about pillars of the community, this is goal number one. I want to have a great community that my family can live in as well. As much as you want a community, you're a family to live in as well. And I have to personally apologize. I think I know the incident that in which you were referring to for yourself with, within your work. And I had, in regards to kind of the tipping point with, uh,
Heatedly, I was spit on in my face. I got punches thrown at me.
I thought it was something to do with a particular person online.
A charge to the assailant. And I was told that I can't even have a trespassing for him. So.
And I, I don't, I'm sorry. I don't know about that. I thought we were talking about a woman who was.
Social media issue. That just speaks to the.
Well, I did not follow up with you. I did kind of contact Chief Knight at the time and tried to make sure that he reached out, but I didn't follow up.
That's okay. Again, I am not here to be your accountability.
I want you to know, you're valuable to me. You're valuable to all of us. Well, I can't actually, I shouldn't speak for all the rest of the council members, but I like to think I would. You're valuable to Chaska.
Thank you for saying that. I appreciate that. I receive it. And thank you for the time to speak. If you don't have anything else, I'll, I'll leave you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else under visitor presentation?
I'm going to piggyback, um, Jenna Cruz, Chaska, on some of what Amanda was saying in that, through the past couple of months, I just haven't seen a sense of urgency. Racism isn't something new in our communities. We formed our group ROAR over a year ago because there are so many incidents in the schools, in the communities. Um, and then given what's transpired recently, that has, that fear has grown exponentially for people of color in this community. And I haven't seen one city leader step up to the plate with a sense of urgency saying, we are going to change. We absolutely, if we don't have people of color in leadership in our city, we need a, a committee, a committee, um, especially in regards, regards to the police policies, uh, some type of oversight committee. You have to bring the lens. We will never achieve what we're talking about here if we don't have people of color at the table. Just saying, bringing people of color to the table shows the white power that we have in our community. The other thing is the Human Rights Commission, which we had a conversation about, Mayor. So I, I absolutely agree with what Amanda is saying. It's an empty shell right now. I have, I've asked people on the commission, what purpose do you serve in our community? And no one can give me an answer. It's unacceptable. We need that ombudsman. We need a place that people can go to make a complaint where they feel safe and trusted. And I can assure you for most of the community that is not at the police station. So yeah, I would say those are the two biggest things for me. Is an oversight committee for police policy that can hold some kind of power and accountability to those that are making the decisions. Thank you. If you have any questions.
I just want to comment again, being on that commission, that was a point of just value to, to be there in that entity. And I'm really sorry that it feels like it's not there. So, thank you.
We had, um, oh, sorry. Can I assist somebody?
You have a question?
Yeah, it's not, it's not for Jenna. Just in general, on this topic. We had, um, before COVID happened, planned to meet with the commission, the Human Rights Commission. So I guess I personally would like us to, you know, put some urgency. And I'll, I'll admit, if you asked Michaela a year ago, like I thought I was doing enough, so I'm sorry. I was not. So, and it, it, it shouldn't have taken the murder of a man in the streets, murder of George Floyd to, to get me there. It shouldn't have. But, um, it's where we are here now. And so I too felt like we were doing enough. We were doing Marnita's table and we were doing this and that. And it felt like enough and that, that, and it wasn't. So I'd like to see us meet with that commission and, um, like our staff retreat comes to mind like a format, a little more like that where we took more time and made a plan. I, I think of us at the retreat last year and we made a really like, we had these goals and we made a plan and we put it to it. And I think we need something like that so that there is accountability and we can say, this is our plan. And, um, this is what we want to work through over the next year and that there's some transparency to that. So I don't know if that's something we could, and again, that's me, but I think.
I echo your thoughts. I agree.
One of the things that was brought up was like, you know, looking at like, you know, some other cities or communities that are doing it better. And I think that's, this, you know, it's something that seems to make sense to say, how can we raise our game, right? And do something better with, you know, with the commissions that, you know, we have some structure there. Can we improve on it, build on it, do something better, you know, create that safe place? Because, you know, that, that safety of being able to share your thoughts and feelings is so important. And we just need to make sure we have a place that's there so that can be captured. Um, and, you know, I think that, you know, there's, there's got to be options out there or other communities that have been successful in doing that. I'd like to know more about what they've been able to do, how they've been able to do it. You know, what are things that we can bring to the table here and raise our communities' game?
Absolutely, we can do that. I mean, I think as we talked about, we had actually planned in April, uh, to actually get the, the groups, uh, the city council and the Human Rights Commission together. It ended up, because of pandemic reasons, getting canceled. But the intent sort of getting to, uh, Councilmember, um, Hatfield's point is that, uh, we'd actually, uh, talked to our facilitator for, um, our council retreats to have it be more of a facilitated, uh, session, to be able to come out of it with some type of goals or expectations about what the council would like to see. About what the council would like to see the commission to be. And I think that's a, I mean, Nate and I have talked about that for quite some time, that I think that that's a, I think it's a critical step to take. I mean, it's, uh, it's one that, uh, um, I, I quite honestly think the commission would like to have too. Uh, to be able to get some clear direction and, and, uh, and, you know, expectations, uh, as far as, uh, where to go. And I think we can absolutely incorporate into that is what are some, uh, best practice models that are out there, uh, in other cities that we could use as? Because some of it, I mean, we might come to, to conclusion, uh, through that process that, uh, you know, some of it might be expectation and goal setting. But some of it might be actual structural changes too. Uh, and so, you know, that's something that, you know, we have to, to look at is, you know, what exactly at the end of the day are we trying to accomplish? And then how do we structure it and establish goals to, to accomplish that?
And one thing I'll put out there on the table is that as, as leaders, we, we sometimes have to put ourselves out there into conversations that will be very uncomfortable. We have to hear things that we may not wanna hear, but we need to hear. And we also have to make sure we're doing our best to represent, you know, as best we can, everyone in our community. And that said, these are not gonna be, not gonna be easy conversations. They're gonna be difficult ones, some challenging ones. We'll probably get pushback from people who are people who support us. But they're ones that we probably need to have to be open and honest because time is only going to make this community more diverse. Whether anyone wants it or doesn't want it, it will become more diverse over time. It will become a larger community and it will become a more rich in tapestry community. And we'd like to have a beautiful tapestry when we get to that point. And it will take a lot of work and a lot of listening and a lot of, you know, soul searching at times to make that happen.
And I'd like to just piggyback on, um, Councilmember Wong's thoughts. I don't think we should look at it through the lens of, well, the surrounding communities aren't doing enough. I don't care about the surrounding communities. I care about Chaska and what Chaska wants to do. And we wanna make this a priority, let's do it.
I would, I would just add that, you know, when we were looking at that meeting in April, it was between the council and the Human Rights Commission. I do think it would be good if we're gonna move forward with that, uh, however social distancing and proper pandemic response allows. That we piggyback and invite the, the police as well. I think they, they may not be directly, but I think that it only makes sense for them to be a part of that conversation as well. At, at least as a listening or an input piece, um, you know, that's, that's kind of my two cents here at this moment. It seems to make some sense. They're doing some stuff. We're working with them. You know, you kind of bring those groups together, especially, you know, as described, if it does, you know, like I said, who knows where it goes. But if it does create that ombudsman or that feedback session, um, you know, having how that interacts with city administration, police department, fire department, other departments. I think is, is important as well. So, thank you.
We'll, we'll pull that together.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, anything else? All right, I think I asked anyone else on their visitor presentation? All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate your comments. All right, we will move on to item, uh, six, which is approving previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second by Councilmember Gra.
Second by Councilmember Gra to approve previous meeting minutes, uh, discussion. Hearing none, Councilmember Gra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Mayor Windshuttle?
Aye.
Five oh pass. All right, uh, moves us to consent items. Again, these are items, uh, that, uh, we need to approve, but not necessarily have a conversation on. Again, with that, if there are no corrections or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved?
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second by Hubbard.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. Discussion. Uh, just real quick, Matt, on, on seven C, it talks about, uh, our delegate update. Well, maybe I was reading that. I was thinking that was talking about who are delegates, but this is just an update from MMUA, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, MMUA is not, it's, it's sort of the lobbying group for all of the municipal utilities. It's not our power agency.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, any other discussion? Okay, Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Gra?
Yes.
Mayor Windshuttle, yes. Five oh pass. Uh, moves us to action items. Number eight A is, uh, motion to approve Chaska Event Center located at thirty-two ten Chaska Boulevard. As the official location for Chaska City Council Meeting due to COVID. Until further notice.
I'm here, council meeting, there is no staff report because it's exactly what it shows. Uh, staff is recommending that, uh, you know, for the foreseeable future. Um, and especially before we make any permanent improvements to our council chambers, we're just not in a position. I mean, you look at even just a, the group of people that we had here tonight, that was probably a dozen people. We'd probably be at our max, uh, in the council chambers to be safe in there, uh, and to be able to do this. I think, uh, I think the thing we're proving tonight is that we can have people come and it be safe, uh, and keep social distancing in here. We're just not convinced as staff, at least at this point, that we can do that for some time. And so we'd make the, uh, recommendation that you actually, uh, uh, establish this as the official meeting location until we get through, uh, you know, sort of the, the COVID experience here.
COVID.
And it might be, you know, it might be that before things completely wrap up, I mean, there might be things that we do to our council chambers, uh, because of, you know, we are gonna be receiving dollars now, uh, we got those allocated. And we have our architect that we're working with to make improvements. It might be that we get it to a point where we feel like we made, uh, enough improvements there where that's possible to do it. We're just not there now.
I guess I'd add, it's, I think it's a combination of those improvements, but also at least as long as the governor's guidelines, you know, 25% capacity of building being in place. That, that leaves very little room in the council chamber, um, today.
Beyond staff.
Right, yeah.
Sure.
So it's a combination of physical improvements and also changes to guidelines and, and policies that the state is putting forward.
Can people hear us back there? Like, that was my only.
There's already some notes I'm taking in my head. Um, I, I think it was especially true during the work session. Uh, I think we're gonna have to look at, uh, improvements that we make. And one might be, we actually have lapel, uh, microphones now that I think that's, uh, one thing that we're probably gonna wanna do is make sure that whoever's up at that, uh, podium actually has something so that everybody can hear it.
That was my, I, yeah, these are for Zoom, right? These mic?
For Zoom, they are not for the audience.
Although these are.
If somebody's out there, they couldn't hear us.
Absolutely. Although these are for Zoom, we did try, tonight we're attempting to have this all plugged into the in-house audio system. What we're learning is that it's not working as we hoped. And there's a number, there's some other bugs and things that, uh, we fully anticipated we'd find tonight as we're doing a real live meeting. Um, I think by and large, we are broadcasting. John can hear us from home, um, you know, on Zoom, it is clear coming across in addition to the broadcast. I think it's the in-house issues that we're noticing the most. But we do have some ideas of things that we change, um, even as soon as next Monday, so.
I was impressed that you already had all of this ready, so.
Wong, I think it's, it's important, you know, I think John, uh, illustrates is it's gonna be important throughout this whole period that there might be times that any of you, or it could be any of us as staff are not, you're not gonna want us at the council meeting. Cause, you know, there might be a reason that, that, uh, we shouldn't be to keep people healthy. And we just don't want that to be a reason to stop business.
Yeah, I was gonna actually say that in my, like, personal comments at the end, but this is an appropriate time now. Cause I want people to, who are watching to understand, like, it wasn't that I just didn't like you guys and didn't wanna come hang out with you in that space. Uh, but you're right, it, you know, I have a, a, a family situation of a, of illness that's unknown. And so it's just like, you know, I'm gonna, I called Matt this morning, we discovered, we heard, talked about it last night, called him this morning and said, you know what? I, I can't in good faith go to this meeting, uh, and even with masks and social distancing, just because we don't know what's going on, um, in general. So I appreciate that. The other comment I would make, that I think I've heard from people in the community, that as we look at allocating dollars, doll, dollars, excuse me, to that, the chamber is, can we, what we've learned through this pandemic, for me and what I've heard, is there's a lot of people that like the Zoom option. And, you know, the idea of like, I have to go down to the chamber at what time? And I don't know what time it's gonna be and devoting seems not transparent always, not inclusive, not to use that word again tonight. Um, so I, I challenge us as if we get back to whatever new normal is, to continue to try. And, and maybe that's a little bit governed by state statute with, you know, everything like that. But I do think we have been more involved and people are willing to participate because they can kind of watch it from a distance in their house. And when their topic comes on, they can jump on. And I, so I think if I've learned anything, like, maybe the old style of, if you gotta say something to the council, you gotta be in the council chamber. Is exactly what I just called it, the old style. And so I don't know what state laws govern that. But I think as we look to continue to get comfortable with technology, finding more ways people can be heard is good.
Don, and I, I, I'm gonna challenge you just a tad on the transparency piece. We have been very transparent from, from the very beginning, cause we tell, advise everything, we, we put everything out there. Everything is there. I'm not saying that under the new Zoom policies, that thing won't change. But the fact of saying that about better, uh, or not transparent, I, I, I would challenge you because what we were doing before COVID, before COVID, you weren't allowed to do these things we're doing.
Yeah, sorry.
What's gonna happen afterwards now, I, I can't guarantee that either, but, um, so we, we have to be careful about that. And if we have the ability to Zoom, but it still takes, it still takes the ability for someone to go find the link to come into a Zoom meeting. I mean, so there's a lot of things, but we as a city council, in my 10 years here, have been very, very transparent. There are people that will argue with me, but we as, we have been as transparent as a council can be about getting information out.
Yeah, if I misspoke or, or it was, you know, sorry, I'm not saying we weren't transparent, don't get me wrong. I agree with what you just said 100%. I think we've done our best. I think this provides another avenue to continue that, that journey. So, a-again, I, I, I don't wanna, I, I don't think you're challenging me because I'm actually agreeing with what you're saying. So, uh, if I didn't sound that way, I apologize. But yeah, I, I do agree, we have been transparent, we continue to be transparent. My point of using that is that, um, this provides another avenue for someone to dial in, listen, be, and participate, that wasn't. So, nope, no offense, Mayor, I, I 100% agree with what you just stated, so not, you, you didn't offend me by any means. Cause I, I may have misspoke or, or it didn't come off the way I wanted to. But yes, I 100% agree that as a council, prior to pandemic, we were, we were transparent as, as much as we can be.
Actually, these, you know, just a quick word on that, these technology options for meetings. Uh, I think Carver County was the first one around here that did, uh, sort of what we're doing tonight. Where one count, or one board member was somewhere else and everybody was, else was present. So there is alternatives and options that exist for us now that quite frankly, prior to COVID, uh, I don't think every, anybody really looked at, uh, terribly seriously because it just wasn't a necessity.
So do you, do you think that people can remotely access the meeting real time and be able to give input via, you know, Zoom or whatever platform? You know, I look at like.
I, I think we.
It's inequitable.
I had the wrong answer. I mean, we'll ask the question.
Sure.
About it, um.
I just think about people that have kids.
I don't know if you're the person to ask about the technology.
I mean, do you see them, do you see them reversing course after pandemic is over? In regards to the allowance of this?
I don't know that they necessarily changed anything because it was, it's emergency.
Okay.
And so there's different rules that, that are at play during a state of emergency than there is during, uh, than there is during normal times. And so, uh, what we're doing now was allowed by state statute prior to any of this, under an emergency situation. To me, the question will end up being, is, uh, is that allowed in a non-emergency situation? That's, that's what we'd have to ask.
And that's kind of what I'm hoping, because I, I, you know, you were talking about just kids, family, getting them to bed, you know, committing. And I, I do think we've, we've had some meaty topics, I'll say it that way. But we've, I think we've seen more people participate, um, than, than I maybe have in my, my history. Now, topics make that true, uh, so that's not a, a, a pure, true honest statement. But, um, yeah, I, that's, that's my, that was my challenge is like, I really hope whoever at the state level makes decisions about what can be used for dialing in and, and Zoom, uh, in a non-emergency situation. Cause we'll get there someday where we're not under the emergency situation, that we can continue to still provide this as a way of participating in the public forum.
All right, anyone else on that?
A procedural question. So on this one, it just talks about the motion that this becomes the, um, the default location moving forward until further notice. Do we want to also amend that Zoom is included too, or that some tele presence is included?
So you're already allowed because we're in an emergency situation? We'd only have to address that if we went out of an emergency situation.
So, so for, for this motion, this is inclusive enough that we'll be okay to say we'll continue meeting here? And I, I think we're able to. A part of it too is it, it's, there's an ease of administration issue here where like for tonight's meeting, there were a number of steps that we needed to go through, um, to essentially make this a special meeting location for tonight. Um, we had to notify the Herald, we had to make sure it got published in the Herald. We had to, we had to physically mail each of you, uh, the fact that it's here. Um, and, you know, there's, there's other sort of hoops that we had to go through. Um, by making this motion, now we've declared, you know, this is the, this is the official location for city council meetings until further notice. We don't have to do all those steps ahead of each meeting going forward. The main thing, I just didn't wanna lose the Zoom capabilities as well. We're meeting here and you've gotta come here. I just didn't wanna lose that because, you know, if one of us falls ill or just even has a cold or something, we don't wanna show up here, right? So. Declaration really is providing us that flexibility that we can do it, whether or not there's a official declaration here tonight. Um, we can continue with that without needing to do that administrative side. So that's really what this ends up being about, is more that administrative piece that we're making that official declaration. And we don't have to mail each of you, you know, that notice and go through all those different steps that we did for tonight.
Sure.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Some moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard, second by Councilmember Wong to, uh, approve that the Chaska Event Center from this day forward will be, uh, well, until further notice, that we will be, uh, holding meetings here. All right, um, Councilmember Hatfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Gra?
Aye.
Councilmember Hubbard?
Yes.
Mayor Windshuttle, yes. Pass is five oh. All right, moves us to eight B, approved city of Chaska pandemic reopening and preparedness plan.
So Mayor, Councilmember, one of the, the item in front of you tonight is actually, it's a requirement coming from the state of Minnesota with sort of the stage of the reopening that they're in now is that all businesses, including municipalities, have to have a pandemic response plan in place. That basically talks about the, uh, how we'll handle the, uh, response to pandemic. And basically what are gonna be sort of those guiding principles for decisions that, that we make. Uh, so you'll see, uh, in the staff report, you know, some of the things that we're, uh, you know, the number one thing we're focusing on is how do we keep, you know, two things, continuity of services, uh, but also our employees and, and residents safe in that process. So some of the principles used to develop the plan that employees and visitor safety is a top priority. Um, in, uh, implementation of the plan will be done in deliberate, thoughtful and incremental way. Uh, so we, you know, for instance, uh, as we've looked at this, we've really looked at, at situations in sort of a two-week time chunk period. Uh, cause, uh, things have, have changed, uh, like that, 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 uh, you know, it's, you know, we try to take things, you know, as we reopen things. We've been reopening them slowly, uh, as, as we do that. You know, even this tonight, this is, this is a very much sort of a slow return to, to normal with, with meetings. Um, the implementation of plan is not driven by dates, so, you know, we really don't know, uh, when. Uh, uh, when uh, we'll be able to get back to uh. Uh, you know, complete uh, normal, but it's, you know, it's really based on. Uh, what measures we have to do to meet our objectives. So how, you know, how are we gonna best meet those goals that are out there? And some of the things that, you know, go into play there is how much PPE do we have available? Um, are, do we have spaces like this where we can socially distance for public meetings? Uh, do we, you know, do we keep employees uh, distance enough so that we don't have a whole department that goes down at once? Those types of, of things uh, really sort of guide uh, decision making. Uh, so you know, it's, it's those types of things that, that we uh, make those decisions off of. It's uh, our ELC has really been using those as guiding principles for. Uh, how to sort of go through this uh, process. Uh, so uh, that's what the, the plan's around. Uh, the uh, like I stated before, uh, the governor did. Um, uh, you know, as he turned the dial, uh, did uh. Uh, require that all businesses, including municipalities have this plan in place. And we also think that, you know, this is critical if we're going to be going through and especially with the allocation now of federal dollars. Uh, what sort of guides those decisions that we make for how to allocate those dollars into making improvements. Um, so um. You know, one of the things that's pointed out in the staff report is we're currently in what's considered uh, phase two. Uh, so um, you know, we are uh, returning uh, people to work, you know, to uh, to give the uh. You know, latest updates the next Tuesday is when the community center uh, will open up and it's not going to open up to. Exactly the way it was before, there'll be uh, people sign up for different activities uh, that go into. So we have some record of people who came in from a contact tracing perspective. Uh, but also we make sure that there's not too many people coming in to uh. Uh, you know, put people in this, uh, in a position where they can't socially uh, distance. Uh, we've done the same as we've opened up this allocation. So uh, the event center has only been open for a week now, but any type of event has to be. Uh, socially distanced like this. Uh, the curling center is going to open up on, on July 27th. And then we're, we've brought back uh, different employee groups. So in it, uh, for instance, like our inspector groups, uh, or inspector uh, group. We did bring them back to City Hall. Uh, so they're working out of there, uh, but we haven't yet uh, gone beyond like uh. Uh, any, like phone calls, Zoom meetings or uh. You know, it's not, it's not open for people just to walk in yet, but they can set up like a meetings. Uh, it, you know, if there's something that has to be done in person and then they have to wear a mask. So I mean, there's, there's different ways. Uh, that people can receive the service up until the point that we completely open up, but we are shooting for. Uh, right around the middle of uh, middle to end of July for the period when we'd start to open City Hall back up to. Uh, public traffic being able to come in. One of the things that we're looking at is how do we keep. Uh, library traffic and City Hall traffic separate. Uh, because that's, you know, quite frankly, most of the traffic that comes in the City Hall is going into the library. And uh, um, from a continuity of service perspective, we just want to make sure that we're keeping those entrances as separate as possible. Uh, as we uh, open back up. Um. But uh, uh, you know, one thing I will say is that cities who have uh, gone through. Uh, the process or opening back up to the public, it's been interesting their experience. They found that not letting many people have come back and people's uh. You know, doing things by Zoom or doing things by uh, phone calls. You know, it's getting to be a point, sort of the, the point that Councilmember Gra was.
Terrifying question. By approving this tonight doesn't mean we can't change it, correct?
It's uh, it's like the 10 commandments, it never can be changed. Yes, uh, yeah, we always can change it. Uh, if there are things that come along that we think uh, uh, just aren't consistent with where we're at, we, we can always bring it back and change it.
Okay, because the only reason I bring that up is I think it, it, it wouldn't be justice if I don't talk about what a lot of councils are talking about, in particular the masks and face coverings. I'm not saying we need to have that debate here tonight, but in particular this last sentence here, it's assigned to be posted encouraging visitors to wear masks. Versus requiring visitors to wear masks. I think is something I, I continue to want to be open to. That's why I asked that question because I think. As we've kind of bounced across the country uh, on those numbers, uh, Minnesota is still, it is rising again, uh, but uh. Kind of making sure that if, if we feel that is appropriate, that we can make that ability to do that.
Well, one of the things I will say that's sort of one of the guiding principles we have with customer facing uh. Uh, positions that are out there, so like customer service, is we really want to make it possible for those employees to be in that position. And not have to worry whether or not somebody comes in with a mask and that there's that protection there to begin with. Um, you know, as we open up the community center, we're actually, you know, we have the, the screens and everything that people are behind. Uh, we're actually going to have those employees behind the screens, wear masks, not because we think it's important for their safety, but it's important for the comfort. Of the patrons who are coming in. Uh, so um. You know, so yeah, i- i- if we feel that there's an issue, you know, the. Biggest uh, objective is keeping people safe and that's both our residents and our employees. And uh, you know, if we feel that there's a situation that just isn't safe, um. You know, I'd venture to say that before we'd even bring it back to uh, council, we'd probably just change it.
And this also needs to be done tonight because we need to have it submitted for the state by tomorrow, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, so you, you said we were in phase two, we must be in phase three, right? Or did you say that? Uh, because it says the city council will meet in person.
No, I, I might, I might have misspoken there.
Staff report, I think it's phase two.
New center, oh, limited capacity by reservation only, yeah.
So we're transitioning, it seems like, we're not.
Kind of in the middle of two and.
Kind of in between.
Yeah, that's.
We're 2.5.
2.75.
2.73, no.
One of the, one of the struggles. You know, with this, the, the intent with the plan here is, is to lay out. You know, what, what the scale is, right? How, how do we, what are different treatments that we might put into place? Based on risk or based on, you know, guidance from the state or, you know, those sorts of things. Um. Differs by facility and things are going to be evolving continually. Um, as we implement this. So this is, this is intended to be a guiding document. It's intended to be something that. We can communicate to the public what practices we're putting in place and what we're looking at. Um, but it's also at the same time, not, you know, cut and dry. It's not three boxes that we're going to always.
Yeah.
Fit exactly into. Uh, it's, there's a gray area between them.
I said like a quick question. In regards to the other commissions, the Human Rights Commission, the Parks Commission, from my understanding, have not met since COVID, right? March?
Our commission has uh, they've been doing more of uh, updates.
Yeah, that's what I, I saw a commissioner over the weekend and asked him. Uh, I know that's under phase three. Is there a tentative date on them? And are they going to meet here?
Yep.
Or how's that gonna look?
Yeah, so the, the Human Rights Commission, I have been providing updates on a regular basis um, to them. And so there has been communication there. Um, I, last, I think it was last week, um. It was two weeks ago, weeks blend together, but recently. Uh, I worked with Jen Walvert, who's acting as the chair.
Yeah.
Um, and we put together a plan to re-meet in July. And so part, part of the, to get into detail there, I guess, for the Human Rights Commission, part of that was. They hadn't met for a few months, um, and that was due to safety precautions. Um, and that was a decision that. I did involve them in, um, as we were making those decisions. Um, and so we want to. Bring, kind of bring them back up to speed and kind of get things going again to have a meaningful meeting uh, come July. So they'll meet their typical date in July, that uh, fourth Thursday. Um, which is what would be scheduled anyway. Um, and we've got, they've got subcommittees. Um, so we're going to convene those subcommittees that were, are working on special projects that they had all identified. Um, we're going to be meeting on those over the month of July, leading up to their meeting, um, so that those subcommittees can. Can report out. Um, and I did encourage all their, all of their participation in the community conversation. So whether it would have been last Wednesday and the in-person one. Or tomorrow at the Zoom based one, I did encourage their participation. Um, certainly I can't require them to. Um, but they are aware of that. So that was sort of the, the June. Meeting substitute, so to speak, um, for them to participate in that. So that then they can come back July and have some conversation about that in addition to the subcommittee meetings for the Human Rights Commission. Um, I don't know whether they'll all meet in person. I think that's going to be an option. It'll probably be sort of a hybrid met like this. Um. I know some of them are not comfortable with that idea.
I just was, just was curious.
All right, anything else, if not an entertaining motion?
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield, bringing the city of Chaska pandemic reopening and preparedness plan. Discussion. Hearing none. Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Gra.
Aye.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Mayor Wunschel, yes, passes five oh. All right, uh, now. We are going to go into a closed uh, session to do the city administrators review.
Mayor, um, I'm also a taxpayer in the city of Chaska, so is there any, does anybody have any questions in, under other business? Otherwise, there's no sense in me staying here.
Otherwise, what?
He doesn't want to stay here. He wants to know if he has any questions for the rest of the meeting before.
He's trying to save us attorney's fees.
Yeah, you can. Anybody got anything for Luke?
Not for Luke.
Good weekend.
All right, thanks.
And Luke?
I told him I'd buy him, I told him I'd buy him dinner.
And then weekend.
Have a motion to go into this session and then.
Yeah, so the, the way it works is that uh, we have to have a motion to uh. We have to have a motion to go into a closed session and then we have to uh, then reopen into the open session again. Uh, when we're done with the closed session. And uh, basically the uh. There has to be a summary report back to uh, the public. Uh, typically what we've done is we've done that at the next subsequent meeting. Uh, uh, under an action item. Uh, but, so it doesn't have to happen tonight, but it does need to happen. As subs- at least as subsequent meeting to, to have a summary back of the discussion that happened during the. During the review.
Yeah.
You have to keep a record of this too.
Yes, yes.
So it'll be recorded, um, we'll have the recording.
It's recorded too.
Yeah, we'll have the recording.
How, usually we use that little recorder. How are we gonna do that? Oh, there it is.
Come on.
Hey, hey, yeah.
Can we get a bigger one?
You want the like two spooling?
Question because uh, I think Matt, you and I talked that we were going to have to set up another Zoom meeting.
Oh, I think what you're going to do is you're in essence going to, were you going to keep this Zoom meeting going, Kevin?
Anybody who's joined as a guest will get put back in the waiting room. The live stream will stop, I guess, once we make a motion or.
Yes. Okay, perfect, thank you.
We need to do anything, Kevin.
No, we probably need.
Don't touch your.
And maybe we move around to the other side so we can see John and so he's not at our back. All right, well, we got the screens too.
Okay, and then.
All right, so to, to move things along. Uh, I would entertain a motion to uh, move into a closed session to do the city administrators review.
So moved.
All right, motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second by Councilmember Gra.
Second by Councilmember Gra, discussion.
We also, you also, do you read this thing, that mayor's thing after we have the vote, right? That disclaimer for the state thing that the mayor has to read? You have to read that whole legal thing. To be it. It's in the bottom of the.
No, it's not.
Request for action, request for, so under this is mayor to read, under some Minnesota state statute, whatever. That procedural thing, asking this mark need to read this.
Does, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, is that after the vote or before the vote?
The law says you gotta keep your record in that way.
Okay, so Luke is saying that.
I have to read that now.
Have to read it.
Oh, I don't have to read? It's just posted?
I forgot, I didn't charge mine. It was like eighteen percent battery when I left.
So Luke is saying that the law, the law says that you gotta keep the record, but, but the law states all of this, what's written here. Um, so you don't have to read it. You just need to make the motion. That's, that's what Luke is advising.
So we did need you, Luke. All right, so, so I have a motion and second to go in the close. I can just go in the closed session at that point? We're all good, right? Yes, we have to vote. All right. Uh, Councilmember, there is no further discussion, right? I gotta make sure, John, I don't see you, no?
Good.
All right, Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Mayor Wunschel, aye, five oh passes. All right, so we will now go into a closed session. All right, welcome back. We are back from the closed session with this.
Make a motion in a second to open it back up for a meeting, yeah.
For eight Ds with.
I did stop that.
Oh, you did.
All right, um, so we are back in the uh, uh. Closed session on the city administrators review. With that, I want to reopen the council meeting. I would look for a. Motion in a second to open the council meeting back up to finish the remaining business.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by, it was unisonced there. I'll give it to Councilmember Hatfield. To uh, reopen the meeting discussion.
I just make a dump for just our, our minute takers. It's opening back up at ten, oh, ten twenty seven.
Ten twenty seven, we, we're reopening the meeting. Uh, I'll take roll call. Uh, Councilmember Hubbard.
Here.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Or yes?
Yes, Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Gra. I heard that, I just laughed. Uh, Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
And Mayor Wunschel, yes, passes. Four with one, I, I'm here. Passes five oh. All right, um. This point, we'll move to bills. Anyone have any questions on a bill?
I do, but I'll keep it, go as quick as I can here. Um, page three, there is an item for. Uh, Brock White Company, um, it's pavement cutters and crack sealants. Just kind of wondering what that was for because it was.
The equipment that we use to do our crack sealing program. Uh, so we, we do all of our own crack sealing, but we don't own the equipment.
Okay, uh, page seven, um, under Yules Manufacturing, horseshoes?
Yeah, it's actually, it's a, it's something that's in a manhole. Uh, that basically is, it's almost like a joint that goes down in a manhole.
Those are manhole part. Okay, got it. Um. Page nine, Greystone Construction Company, the Willow Room Office Conversion or something, what was that?
So as part of the community center, uh, one of the things that we did is we uh, took the old Rainbow Room. And it was renamed the Willow Room a year ago. Um, but uh, um. We moved the community center functioned offices up to the, up to the front, out of the park and rec office. Uh, one of the reasons we wanted to do that is to create more uh. Visibility for our staff, our community center staff up in the front. Uh, and just more support for our front desk support up there.
So that way if they needed help, they didn't have to go all the way to the other end of the building, they could get it from there. Gotcha.
Yeah, it's. What's that?
It's an office now.
It's an office now. It's, they were just. Operationally, the front desk is just too much an island up there.
So should I take in no parties in the office now?
Well, we actually, so the conference room in the office, then we're converting to a rentable. Uh, uh, space. And so the Rainbow Room, old Rainbow Room now is office, but then we took the conference room that was in the office space and turned that into a rentable space.
That's another, it's on the other side of the building.
Yeah, it's right, it's right next to the park and rec offices now.
Gotcha. So there's just basically swapping the two spaces. Okay. Um, no, page fifteen, um, Aqua Logic, and it looks like there's a, a repair for a community center entrance. When I looked up Aqua Logic, there were swimming pool contractor out of Waconia, so that was confusing.
A concrete company.
Ah.
And so it's under Aqua Logic, but it's uh, it was concrete work that was done. We uh. We, like in front of the lodge, the steps were uneven, the, some of the sidewalk had sunk and so it became a tripping hazard and stuff like that.
Gotcha. Um, page twenty three. Gotcha. Page twenty-three, SRS Consulting Group, there's items for two twelve interchange, and I presume that was for forty-four.
Yeah, so the, the, even though we did the interchange last year and forty-four is this year, it's all considered the interchange project. We just split it into two years, so that's, SRF is the designers of that project.
So we'll see this again next year, or no, it's for, this is the final one.
It'll be done this summer.
Okay, so this is the final one for that piece of it.
Well, it's, I, I won't say it's a final bill from SRF, because they're, they're also the, they inspect the project, you know, to make sure that it's meeting up with their plans. So, and when the project's done, that's all, you know, a lot of that was all covered by the state. State funding through the bonding. We got the ten and a half million dollars from the state.
This is gonna be pass-through funds from the bonding.
I wouldn't call it pass-through funds, because I mean, we, we receive the dollars and it's not like the, the forty-four project and the two, and the interchange itself. The total cost of that project is more than ten and a half million. The interchange is ten and a half million, but their design costs were included in the interchange project.
Oh, gotcha.
There's, we ended up putting in an additional four and a half million, and the county put in like five and a half million into the rest of the County Road forty-four construction. So, you know, overall, we got a twenty million dollar project for four and a half million bucks.
Nice. Good deal. Page twenty-three, last one here, St. Paul Stamp Works, and I'm assuming the dog tags are for canines, not actual dog tags, right?
So it's, it's our stock for dog licensing.
Okay, that's all I got.
Just real quick, throughout, I'm, we see different things for like COVID, spacing mats, sneeze guards, that we will get the funding to cover. Those are things that are included in that?
Yes, there's two things. There's two sources of funding right now that we have for COVID. One is FEMA and the other one is the stimulus dollars. And a lot of the things that you're seeing for COVID right now are actually getting swept into the FEMA dollars. And that's sort of a strategy that we've been using is to try to get as much reimbursed from FEMA that they will as possible so that we preserve as many of those stimulus dollars when they do come through.
Okay, cool. That's the only question I had.
I just got one bolted in Mink, City Square Park Archaeology. Is that, is that something we're doing there? Or is that a finish up from last year or what?
Finish up the report for, they did archaeological work to basically look at Walnut Street because of the Native American burial mounds in the park to make sure that those didn't extend into the street for being able to reconstruct that road.
This is a question that I posed to me, and I don't have the answer. We already dug in that road and put in sewer and water. So how come that project got stopped when that's already been, it's already been touched?
It's a state process. It's, you know, it's, it's a permitting process, and so they, it's like with an EAW. You have to provide notice to multiple different agencies out there, and if they have a concern about something, they can stop that and you know, require you to go through certain testing to, you know, to, to make sure that there's not a concern there.
Okay.
It's always a risk with projects, like, you know, if, if you're getting into an area that, I mean, Carver County, a good example, was when they did sixty-one over by the roundabout over there. They ended up having to shut down for two reasons. One was bees and one was because it was a, it wasn't burial mounds, but it was, it was a, like a hunting site, ancient hunting site.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else on a bill? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Wong. Second by Councilmember Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing none, I will call roll. Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard. Mayor Wunschettle, yes. Passes five oh. Moves us to other business, yes, other business.
Okay, so I'll keep it brief. The community feedback discussion on the twenty-fourth was good and healthy, but one of the things that I picked up from it, too, was that was that it felt like there's some voices who were having trouble being heard, so to speak, and, you know, just something that, you know, even like in the group that I was with. There was definitely some, it was, there's an interesting dynamics at play, so I think that it's making sure that we find a way for some voices that not, might not feel comfortable speaking out, have a forum to be able to speak out there, because I felt like, like someone would say something like, well, you know, like, in this particular example, I'm thinking of, they, you know, someone started saying something about how they were, you know, having challenges because they felt like they didn't, the police didn't understand them, or, you know, they didn't really have a, you know, didn't feel comfortable sharing that. And then someone else jumped in and said, well, in my experience, the police have always been fantastic, and kind of shut them down and kind of didn't let them really finish what they were thinking. So it was like, well, wait a second here, it's like, they need to kind of express their challenges. And it was always, it, it kind of felt like there's two different kind of dynamics going on, so it wasn't, so, and I know that the facilitator was there to try to, you know, represent, you know, allow those to speak, but it was one of those things where I think that, you know, we need to make sure that those voices can be heard in, in forums, you know, however we need to, because it's important that all the voices are heard, especially the ones who might not feel empowered to speak.
Yeah, I think one of the things that's important to, to point out is, and we put this out on the website with the information that, that Kevin put out with the information we went through tonight, is that any, any type of feedback is fine. I mean, if people wanna provide it in writing, if they want to get a meeting set up with somebody, if they, you know, it doesn't have to be in the forum. And one of the things we talked about in the forum setting is, we wanted to, you know, one of the reasons we brought facilitators in is we wanted to make, we wanted to try to make sure that it wasn't just that you just, that there'd be one or two or three people that would talk, but then fifty people would say, you know, wouldn't be able to get some kind of a voice into there. Obviously, nothing's perfect, and that's why we're trying to provide different venues for people to do that. And so I guess, you know, my message would be if, if people don't feel that that was the right way for them to get their feedback, don't hesitate to just let us know that and, you know, request a meeting, or put it in writing, or call us, or whatever the case may be, that will get into the feedback.
Sounds good. I was able to participate in the, the food distribution that was hosted by Roar Latino Voice Esperanza and CAP of Scott Carver, Dakota Counties on Saturday. And I heard that they served like over three hundred seventy-five people through that, so that was like a, a big one. I know that Councilmember Hubbard was also there, too. So that was a really, you know, good to be able to help out people in need. Upcoming events tomorrow is like, we just talked about the, another community discussion, so I plan on attending that as well, and I'll be on Zoom. It's what, nine to ten thirty tomorrow morning, right? And so that'll be virtual, so for anyone who wants to attend. And last but not least, the fun one is the Independence Day fireworks, which are still on, you know, rain or shine, right? So I think, sorry, like, ten o'clock, ten o'clock, McKnight Park, so, you know, I anticipate that it's gonna be full. Just out of curiosity, we know of other communities are still doing theirs, too.
No, Chan Aston's doing theirs. I don't know beyond that.
Aston, Lakeville, and Delano. Is Waconia?
Waconia, Kansas.
I think, I think those were, I have not heard any more other than those, but that's the last I heard. Delano, I think it was Lakeville and Chan, and then we joined now.
Should be just the two, Chan Aston, Lake Anne is not accessible for viewing.
Cannot go to the park.
So they're still doing, but you can't go to the park. So just, I'm kind of wondering how the crowds will be at our park, you know, at McKnight Park, given that now we have like, you know, just maybe fewer.
Great to have Chan Aston next to us, because that's their city celebration, and so they put a ton of, of resources into their fireworks. You know, and it's community groups and stuff that come together for that. But, you know, I always sort of build our Chaska fireworks as being good old fashioned small-town fireworks, as you're not gonna see the biggest show in the world, but it really serves, I think, the purpose of our community well.
I know that myself and my family, and I know a lot of other people looking forward to it, too, because this is one of those things that really feels kind of normal, right, to go to something like that. So I think everyone's looking forward to it, to have that, that brief bit of normalcy and things. So that's all I got.
Councilmember Gra.
I'm going with too much. I just had a couple of things I wanna talk about. Start with Hawks Ridge opening. Unfortunately, did not get to the grand opening, which was a little bum, but that, to me, is a project that says Chaska on it, because it started with a impassioned group of individuals who no idea, when they had the idea of doing this, how much red tape, truthfully, and, and different groups and trying to figure out who owned what land and, and, and lengthy. I mean, I was actually on the park board when that still kind of first came up. So truly a success story, because on top of that, volunteers, you know, going out there, creating the paths. You know, I think it's just a, it's a, it's a good success story of using a piece of land that, truthfully, wasn't gonna get used for anything else, because it just isn't really usable, other than believe mountain bikes. So I do wanna point out that I noticed that a neighbor to the south is looking at a mountain bike path, but ours opened up first, so I'll just, we'll, we'll just leave it as that. And then lastly, I just kind of comment just as a observation here, as I continue to reflect kind of after the, the murder of George Floyd and, and the, the Black Lives Matters movement as it continues. And then just the overall, the greater sense of, of diversity and celebration and inclusion, really just challenging the city as we continue to look, to look at different celebrations. You know, I continue to try to find out, educate myself this last year on Juneteenth. You know, I heard rumbles of what it was, truthfully, to be a hundred percent. Last year, didn't really know much about it and really said, hey, I need to learn this. You know, I, I think the city can look at what could be done, you know, in future years. I also think the other one that I, I, I guess, I, I raised, I think, Matt, you were gone, I talked to Nate a little bit. Just a sense of celebration for Pride Month for the City of Chaska and how that interplays as we continue to look worries to drive, you know, I, I think of St. Goyd Mayo, for example, for the Latino community. Just continues a ways that are not maybe, you know, our holidays tend to be white holidays or Anglo-Saxon holidays and, and federal holidays, and find ways to find to pull in the other groups that make up this community that make it great. Because at the very least, it serves as an educational tool, because I think, you know, Juneteenth is a good example, is that it really just started moving forward and getting publicity for people to understand, even though it's been celebrated for many years. And like I said, consider myself naive and, and trying to get rid of that and educate myself, but just taking the opportunity to learn and understand what it, what it is and what it's for. So I just, like I said, you know, reflecting on the month of June as we close here, I think those are some opportunities that I won't say were missed, because, you know, it, it, we've been busy. But I think we need to be more purposeful and practical when we think about some of those holidays that are holidays for those that are, you know, have different backgrounds and diversities and, and those things. So just wanted to put that out there. That is all I have.
Okay. Councilmember Hubbard.
Yeah, a few things. Food Drive, as Councilmember Wong had set up, that was, this is Saturday. It was, it was an amazing event, served, like he said, over three hundred families, over thirteen hundred people. I was just simply amazed at all the different organizations that he had mentioned that kind of came together and collaborated on it, and just the quickness of this, that kind of came up fast. And all the volunteerism, happy to be a part of it. And it was just, it was, yeah, it was wonderful to be able to serve members of our community, so it was great. The Hawk Ridge Bike Trail, went to the opening of that, and yeah, kind of echoing Councilmember Gra's thoughts. I had, I take no credit. I had no part in making that happen into fruition, but just to hear Marshall, you know, speak with, you know, just such passion about it and, and showed me the map and just all the, you know, ingenuity that went into it. It's really a really neat thing, so I.
Fun, too.
Yeah, and you, you were there and you biked it. You gave me your feedback and.
Really tough.
You know, the partnership between all the different agencies and cities and, you know, and just the volunteerism and that, and, you know, what an awesome project to get behind and, you know, be a part of as a team. So that was really fun to, to be there and see that. The community conversation this last week, yeah, I mean, that was great as well to hear the feedback. I would say the mask versus all the groups in this one singular space made it difficult. But, you know, those are challenges that, you know, as we continue to have more of these conversations, how they're functioned, how they're set up, like Councilmember Wong, the ability to be able to hear all voices, that's gonna be a continuing thing that I think we need to look at and continue, and it's not over, so I wanna stress that. And then I did have a constituent reach out ki- kind of concerned about the speeding on Bavaria Road. Now, I know forty-one is now open, it sounds like, from, through the roundabouts, maybe that might alleviate some of the, the construction traffic or just overall traffic over there, especially, you know, she, she lived in the area, but kind of over by the town course, kind of on that part of Bavaria.
Definitely would have been impacted by construction.
Well, you know, the windiness, and I just think, though, as I look around, even my own singular neighborhood, people are just speeding. So that's like my PSA for this meeting, is just to slow down. Don't speed. Don't have to go fifty in a thirty. You know, watch out. There's a lot of kids out and about outside now, you know, not, not as many activities to do. I just think everyone just needs to like, slow down, don't speed. And then as I was bike riding on Sunday, I did come across the Lake Grace Pavilion over there. I don't know if you guys have seen it lately, but it looks like it's almost done. And it looks wonderful, so I just wanted to say great job on that, and happy fourth. Stay safe. Wear a mask if you're getting together with company, whether it be indoors or out, social distance, all that fun stuff. That's it.
Councilmember Hatfield.
I'm, you know, echo most of what was said, so we're trying to teach my eight-year-old niece about what Auntie Michaela had to do tonight, and she thought it was like Judge Judy, so I just wanna say, hey, Anya, it's not Judge Judy. So I told her I would shout her out. And then, yeah, the community conversation, just really quick on that. You know, I, it sounds like each group kind of had a different, you know, feel to it. We, I thought our group had a really good conversation. I think it was, you know, really good. It was hard with the masks and the space and whatnot. But I think at the heart of it, getting the feedback is the important thing, and I'm so glad we're doing that. And I agree with Councilmember Hubbard, just to keep striving for those safe places and giving those voices space to speak, so. Yeah, I think that's all I had. Oh, nope, I didn't. I had one more thing. Um, just a, so I know there was a note in the biweekly about the backyard chickens. The, on that note, I did have a constituent contact me. That ordinance kind of lumps together a few different things, including bees, which is currently in the ordinance, so I just wanna look at it like in a broader sense than just chickens. So, like, one of our, one of my constituents has bees and she uses it to educate her autistic son, and they get to sell honey and whatnot, and the bees are even more than chick, I guess, you know, people use chickens for similar thing, but an important thing now, so if we could look at it on a broader sense than chickens. But with that whole ordinance, because I think it does apply to more than just chickens, so that, you know, as we're thinking about that.
Do we have a ordinance against bees? I don't even know.
A lot of places do, yeah. Yeah.
So also a lot of people have like bee allergies and things like that.
For us, it's not that they're not allowed in the city. It's just that they're, you have to be in the green belt to do it. Yeah.
So I mean, it's just like, you know, you can have chickens in the, or the rural part of our city too.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
And so, I mean, so we kind of do have that in place that there are, but it's just unfortunately not everywhere.
Yeah.
So, but we're already addressing that, I believe, as we.
Yeah, we're uh not next meeting, but on the twentieth. We're planning on coming back with that.
That's all I have.
All right. Matt? Hey, Kevin? I don't have a lot. I it's just, it's pretty much the same thing. I think that, you know, it's obvious tonight, we heard that uh what we felt, we did a um good job getting or or doing the community conversation. Other people felt differently. So we'll we'll just keep moving forward. We kind of knew that that would happen and and that's okay. I mean, that's what we're trying to find out is we needed to start somewhere and start to have the conversation. And um everybody views things differently, how they want to do things. And, you know, when we did that, we felt, by going into small groups, we felt that was the best way, that everyone had an ability to speak because um there are times where you could have uh just a full open meeting where people might be intimidated by others or might not want to say anything. So, I mean, like I said, everyone has a different opinion, how we feel things and and uh we'll keep going. And uh have we sent that letter, Kevin, out to all the residents yet?
No, we're we're targeting only sometime a week after four.
Okay. And so that'll be another way for people, and we've already kind of hit on that, to 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 do have that ability. And and our goal is is to try to uh have a conversation with everyone. Um, we've set up a meeting with the group here tonight. Um, or we we've reached out to say, let's set up a meeting. And uh we're just working on a date. Uh, I I found out the date that we presented is not gonna work for one of them. And I said, so just get us some alternative dates and we'll hopefully we can find something that works for everyone. But um, so we're gonna reach out and sit down with uh the rural group and have a conversation. And I I think that's just another step of trying to have everyone uh everyone's voices heard and and uh we're trying to do our best and and. I did drive by. Uh, my knee was not real healthy, but I wouldn't have been able to come anyways. We already had two councilmembers there uh at the uh food drop. And uh there was a lot of people there. So um uh good to see. I I actually asked about helping and they felt that they were good with help at that point, but that was earlier on. So but I heard later on, I thought, well, were you sure or not?
I stayed for the whole thing, so I stayed longer than I signed up for, but.
People signed up for maybe.
Yeah, I mean, it was just many hands make light work kind of thing, so.
Well, good that everyone was able to uh from here to be able to help and and make that work. And I know Kevin and Julie were huge in making that happen. So so thanks to everyone involved with that. Um. Happy Fourth of July. I know fireworks are illegal, but everybody's got them. So be safe. Count to five and look at each hand and make sure they're still there tomorrow. So uh be safe. Uh, if you're traveling uh as well, be safe. So uh Matt, just a quick question.
Yep.
Creek Road Sewer, is that still looking like that we maybe?
We actually just had a meeting about that today. Um, so one of the things that we want to make sure that we have in place before we start that project is some kind of assurance from the developer that's working on that. And um COVID has slowed down everything. And so my gut tells me that that developer is still gonna be working on that project, but it's gonna take longer. And so if that's the case, it it does not behoove us to do that project any sooner than we need to because we pay for that through development fees. And so my gut would tell me that we're gonna go through the process and you'll see it actually coming up on the next council meeting is a request for for a council to authorize a feasibility study on that project. So we want to be in a position where uh, you know, we've acquired all the necessary property. We've gotten all the easements that we need. We've done the feasibility studies so that when we can have the developer commit to it, that we can just move. But it's still a, it's a two-year project. And so um, you know, we're making sure to that the developer knows that, hey, the the sooner you can commit to this, the sooner we can get going.
And and they know that we're looking for a commitment from them?
Yeah, I mean, we've shared that with them. Um, but my sense, and it's it's been the same, we've continued to have conversations with the developers who uh put in uh RFQs for the City Square West, is people continue to have interest in stuff. It's just everybody's taken a pause uh on the development side before they just jump right into things.
Yeah. Um, and then do we, do we have the ability to apply for the permits across the creek now? Or do we have?
That stuff we can control. We can do that. But that would be part of that sort of, how do we get ourselves prepared to be able to move as quick as possible?
And even if we got those permits, it's still a two-year project?
It's, yeah, I mean, construction, construction-wise, it would be very difficult to get that done in one season.
Yeah, okay.
You you know, I I get.
It's it's a closed road. They're not dealing with traffic as they're doing it. And so I don't know. I I.
You know, you bring up a good point. I guess I was thinking of it under the 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 terms of getting that permit, you know, that's. Yeah, that, I mean, now I think about it, I mean, I I guess if we had that permit in hand, that could change the the timing of it.
They could really dig from both ways.
Yeah, that's, I can find out for sure if what kind of impact that has.
Had somebody grabbing them, or not grabbing, uh not happy with the roadway. And I said, well, that that'll change, but now.
Now, one thing I will say that we just had to do from a safety perspective is the north half of that road is terrible.
Yeah.
And um, you know, we're not ready to shut that down yet and but it's not safe. And so you'll see, I think, uh it added like five thousand dollars onto our overall blacktopping project this year. We have to go in and do something with that just temporarily. So you will see uh some work to do some patching up there because it's just not safe.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
No, it's bad.
I worry about motorcycles because that's.
motorcycles, but also, I mean, it's just vehicles. I mean, it, you sort of feel like your vehicle's shifting as you're driving over it.
Are those lines along there communication or they're not electric? Because there's like always trees leaning on them. They're communicating so less. I mean, still.
Not dangerous, but they do have to repair those a lot.
Protect the road from being dangerous because some of those trees would just right down on the road if not for those lines. So.
I, you know, it's a, it's a good, it's a good observation though, is that, you know, we've always sort of approached this as we get the permit as part of the actual construction to keep it going. You know, if we didn't start the construction, got the permit, yeah, maybe we could get that done in one summer. So.
Something else. I'm drawing a blank. Too late. Um, all right, I think that, there's just something. That's it. I don't know. I don't know what it is. I lost it. I had it and then never mind. So, all right, uh, anyone else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, motion by Councilmember Hatfield, second by Councilmember Hubbard to adjourn. Uh roll call. Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Gra.
Aye.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Mayor Winshuttle, yes. Passes five oh. We are adjourned. We are, oh, I was gonna say, we are back here next Monday. Uh, so we got back to back because of fifth. That's what I wanted to say. So we'll see you in one week. Uh have a happy fourth.